We'll call this meeting to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Trustee Polly.
There.
Trustee Lappin.
Here.
Clerk Palovich here, Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Here.
Trustee Croll.
Here.
Trustee Reiner.
Here.
Supervisor Skibby.
Here. Uh, moving forward before we adopt the agenda, uh, there are some amendments to the agenda as presented. Uh, the closed session will actually go, uh, just before old business, it will be quick. And with that being said, are there any other, yes?
Uh, two things, uh, one, we table to list state land bank, uh, funding authorization, so I'd like that put back under old business.
Okay.
And then I'm going to ask for a resolution to recognize the charitable organization that I'm a part of. And it's from the state gaming lobby commission, so, uh, if we can just put that down as number twelve on new business.
Well, I would actually like to see what, I mean, for non-presenting, I mean, I guess, what is its affiliation?
Uh, it's just to recognize that it's a charitable organization.
Okay, that's so number well will be, what will it be titled? You can just tell me.
Yeah, local, local government, uh, resolution for the lottery commission.
Who's the organization?
Uh, it's called absence pregnancy center, it's also, the legal name is, uh, compared compassion pregnancy center of northeast Michigan.
Okay, and that's right there now, ninth avenue?
Yes.
Copy. Okay, so we have, uh, amendments being closed session moving before old business in addition to old business B being land bank Alpena County. And new business twelve, um, resolution for options. Are there any other corrections, additions or substitutions?
Nathan, I thought you mentioned to me earlier today, Van Nisha, where you're adding him?
I'm not adding him because he was not gonna be able to have it complete by the timeline that's had, so I'll try to get some more contractors to hopefully bid on things.
Okay.
Uh, with that being said, uh, is there a motion to approve the amended agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the table, is there support or it's been moved and supported to adopt the amended agenda? So any other conversation, all those in favor of the amended agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose the same. Uh, agenda has been approved, moving forward, uh, this is the, the first opportunity for public comment. If there's any public comment online or in person, uh, please raise your hand up on the bottom taskbar under the ellipsis. Uh, so that we can identify you. And hear your comment. Again, this is the first opportunity for public comment, if there's anybody online has any comment, please use the bottom taskbar under the ellipsis of more to raise your hand or send a message so that we can identify you. Seeing none, uh, moving forward, uh, to the consent agenda. Uh, is there anything that needs to be pulled or discussed at length? If not, I've entertained a motion to approve that consent agenda is presented.
Some.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda, is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported, uh, any further discussion? Uh, seeing none, roll call please.
Clerk Palovich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Croll.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yeah.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. At this point in time, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that the township board entered a closed session to consult with the township attorney pursuant to MCL one five dot two six eight one E.
We have a motion on the table to go into closed session, is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported, uh, further discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Croll.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Palovich, yes, Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, six oh three. We're officially in closed session, this will be. Okay, we're officially back in open session. With that being said, uh, is there a motion?
I move to authorize the township supervisor and the township attorney to prepare and transmit a formal request to the city of Alpena to seek an update on reconciling and resolving rates to be charged by the city to the township.
We have a motion on the table, is there support?
Support.
Been moved and supported, further discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Trustee Croll.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Palovich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, moving forward in the agenda, old business A is a invoice for G and K, uh, this was uh, for the electrical work, uh, that they had to do, uh, for the AC in the server room. Um, and it's my recommendation to make payment utilizing one oh one two six five nine three zero zero one zero. Which is a building, uh, maintenance and repair.
So moved.
We have a motion on the table, is there support? Trustee Reinhard with support, further discussion? Seeing none, uh, roll call please.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polling.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Palovich, yes, Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Croll.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, moving forward to added old business item B, land bank Alpena County, uh, trustee Reiner, uh, your recommendation is for a funding mechanism of five thousand dollars?
Yes, it is, the land bank needs, uh, we get most of the funding to do what we do in reimbursable grants typically, um, but the, uh, certain costs such as, uh, well, sometimes demo, but most of the, the grants lately have been including demo, but, uh, some other costs like, uh, title of work. Graezles, things like that. Are on us and we had no money, and so we've got the counties contributed some money. The city of Alpena either has or has committed to, uh, contributing some money. And, um, I indicated to the land bank board, which I sit on through the township. And on behalf of the township that, uh, I would ask our township for up to five thousand dollars, uh, for, uh, similar expenses to be uh, used, I'm not asking at this point that it be an annual line item. Because we're hoping that, uh, the work that we're doing on projects will generate some of this type of seed money, if you will, to keep the ball rolling from this point on, but if it should fall short, then I might see you again next year.
Okay, so with that being said, I look at, um, our budget, uh, and, uh, following the recommendation of trustee Reinhard. We'd be looking at, we actually have GL already set up that we could easily rename, uh, to land bank under, uh, department six oh two, which is health and welfare, which makes the most sense for us. And actually, the former name of that GL was dangerous building cleanup. Um, so I think that that would be probably make sure that through the chart of accounts that it's an acceptable, uh, GL. Um, but it would be my recommendation to, um, make a, a budget adjustment and add it to the remainder of pulling five thousand dollars out of one oh one three seven one eight oh one zero zero zero, which is professional and contractual services, which we had funded, uh, through the building, uh, department, uh, of five thousand dollars and transfer five thousand to one oh one six oh two eight three two zero zero zero.
Can I make that a motion? I make that as a motion.
Okay, that would be the motion, any support to that? Support, been moved and supported, further conversation?
I'm just curious, what is, how is that comparable to the county and to the city?
The county gave, I think, twenty-five thousand, I'm not sure.
The city for their minutes was ten thousand?
Ten thousand, and that was Danny Mitchell's on, on this committee from the city, uh, on this board, I guess it's called. So, yeah, but I think we were looking at as many of the other townships as we could, like five thousand or three thousand of the, of the smaller ones maybe. And, and, uh, and I guess I should explain, the city's kind of jumped ahead and they're, they've got, I think, seven or nine projects going now, one including the old big boy on Chisholm. Uh, that you've been reading about, um, and, uh, the land bank has involvement in that through one of the grants. So, um, but they've got some other blighted properties, couple of which will be demolished and then probably habitat will be putting up homes, uh, it'll be the the authority that is involved in that, and I think we've talked a little bit, we've identified one or two projects in our township that I hope to get on the docket for the land bank. To try to get, uh, uh, get ourselves involved as well, uh, because we do have some blight and, uh, you know, and that's kind of what this is all about, is getting blighted properties that aren't generating tax monies back on the tax rolls with modernized homes, either by repair or by rebuilding, demo and rebuilding, getting them back on the rolls and, uh, and, and making our community a better place. And housing we do need.
I have a question, how does the property get on the land bank, I mean, like, it sounds right now that most of it is all in the city.
Well, uh, the county treasurer is the chair, so, you know, projects can go directly to her at this point. But any one of us on the board, and that's Todd Britton, Danny Mitchell, uh, Bill Peterson, myself and, and Kim, um, we can, we can hear from someone and.
So then, do you guys vote on which properties?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Yeah, yes, we do, but usually what we do is we first turn it over to, uh, uh, Lenny, um, Avery, yep, and, uh, he, he will explore the property and give us a report on it, and then we, then we bring it to the board.
And is Lenny from Target?
Target, yeah, yeah, Lenny's from Target, right now we're using them as kind of our agent for these types of developments.
Yeah, so my, my question is, uh, when do you meet again, because I'll compile a list, because yes, at this point in time, there's eight or nine projects in one municipality and none in any other municipality in the county, so if it's a first come, first served, then I definitely want to make sure we're the next up to be served.
I think it's the third wins.
But is it really based on first come, first served, I mean, it seems like it, they should be reviewed and we have X amount of money we're gonna spend this year and.
Well, it takes a willing participant to, someone who's willing to put their own sweat equity and money.
Private property owner sometimes.
Have their house torn down.
I see, okay.
Or their commercial property severely revamped.
Yeah.
I will give you, uh, one example that we, I think, aren't moving forward with right now, and that was, uh, with, uh, some funding from, uh, Mr. Concheck upfront, and then a grant and, and some additional work that would be done through the land bank and the, and target, uh, to get part of those structures, the, the worst one, the one that as a prosecutor doing juvenile work, where, where a lot of my juvenile crimes were occurring in the, uh, in the, uh, Fletcher paper buildings. Okay, and it's kind of dangerous in there for people, and so we're hoping to get that back on for next year, but that's, that's kind of a big deal, a big project. That wouldn't necessarily generate residential, but.
So Russ, if somebody wanted, they had a piece of property, whether it be a vacant piece of property or a structure of some sort, if they wanted to, in effect, gift it to the land bank.
They can do that.
Then, then the land bank would have the burden to either rehabilitate it or sell it or do, do whatever they wanted to it, because it was their property.
And then we can work with an agent like Habitat, not always Habitat, but somebody if we want to do residential or something like that.
But any time that money that, that you would well, it goes a little bit off what you're saying, but if, if, if you, if the land bank wanted to sell it, that would just be another formula or another revenue stream.
We could turn around and sell it or demo it, but some of this, this money that we're talking about quite often does not allow, we can't use grant money for acquisition, for example.
Right.
So if it's donated or if we bought, there's one lot in town that's been demoed by the county treasurer, was taken back for taxes. And there's one property that I'm very aware of in the, in city, uh, it's a vacant lot now. Uh, but someone bought it out of state at tax sale, and, uh, and now she's set a price on it. And the debate at the land bank, for example, is whether we want to pay that price to get that lot, to do that development, to get the house on that property.
Okay.
It's near the railroad tracks, so.
Yeah, and so the feed and intersect there is, um, uh, the board at previous meeting, uh, afforded me the ability to disperse with some parcels that were in holding. And one of the parcels was in the pad port edition. Um, and that may be one of the gifts from the township board to the land bank as well as just an economic driver, appears a virgin piece of property. Built some homes.
No, I think they're great ideas, uh, many counties have these land banks or brownfields in addition to the land.
And we just started this, well, I, I don't know when I was appointed, sometime last fall, but I think they formed what county land bank in some like August of last year. But it's been a state law in the books. But there was some gaps in the law which we're identifying now, because we said, oh, we don't have any money, how, how do we even get started, how do we even set up a bank account to run funds through, I mean, we need money to set up a bank account, you know, things like that, so, uh, there's some operational costs that the state didn't think about as they offered this opportunity to us.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so we have a motion in support, um, with, uh, the request from, uh, trustee Reinhard to fund, uh, the Alpena County land bank, um, with the GLs I formerly gave, uh, any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Palovich, yes, Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Croll.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Moving forward into new businesses, budget adjustments, uh, two of which I have this formally, uh, described in terms of, uh, renaming and funding, uh, GL six oh two eight three zero 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 from eight oh one zero zero, I'll give you.
Yes, please.
That will fund five thousand dollars for the land bank, and then also, uh, one other additional, uh, GL that needed, uh, an amendment, uh, and it's not on your list, unfortunately, I do apologize, was for, uh, an upcoming business item, uh, number four. And that is an addition in, um, our enterprise fund five nine two, uh, and it is, uh, an adjustment of one thousand two hundred and seventy-eight dollars that will be coming out of five nine two five three seven nine three two zero zero zero, uh, and moving to five nine two five three seven nine three one zero two zero. Uh, and that is the only other addition to the budget adjustments you have in your copy, so at this point in time, I entertain a motion to approve the budget adjustments, uh, presented and verbalized.
Some.
We have a motion on the table, is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported, further discussions? Seeing none, uh, roll call please.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Palovich.
What's your name?
Who is it?
Yes. Yes.
Use a different voice.
Yes.
See, Ryan.
Yes.
You're going downhill, you're going downhill.
Trustee Polly. Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Okay, and, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll kill that funny just by a simple one, um, planning commission appointments, it is, uh, my pleasure to, and bring the recommendation, um, to appoint Michelle Woodruff, um, onto the planning commission for a three-year term. Uh, her term expired this year, um, and she is currently serving as, uh, vice chair of the planning commission. Does an amazing job, uh, and an asset to that, that commission, uh, the, he's on.
Yes, I totally agree with that.
Okay, um, so my recommendation is there a motion to make an appointment?
Bring your motion.
Okay, we have a, a motion, a motion and support to appoint Michelle Woodruff to a three-year term on the planning commission. Uh, further discussion? Seeing none, uh, roll call please.
We can do a voice. Like you to do it, clerk Palovich, yes, treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Croll.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Okay, moving forward to road agreements, um, you had one precursory, uh, list, uh, their primary secretary, Ms. Patterson, was out of town on vacation, uh, when we were putting together the agenda. So what you have in your packet is not a hundred percent, uh, factual at this point. Um, it was actually, one thing was changed and one thing was removed from what you have. I'll make this available, but the projects are as stated, our match this year is one hundred and thirty-one thousand eight hundred and forty-seven dollars, that's a fifty-fifty match with the road commission. Um, and what is presented are, uh, projects on Wessel Road, um, under, well, Wayne Road has, uh, Seal Coat, which is a reduction because the first iteration, um, had some additional costs, uh, we have seal coat on Wayne Road, we have heavy maintenance projects, uh, ditching, cross culvert, uh, three ditching and cross culvert projects, one being on Wessel Road at, uh, Kirchhoff. Next being Kirchhoff Road from Wessel, uh, then Samp Road at Kirchhoff, uh, and then Jesse Road. Which is off Piper Road and then Trumble Mill Road, um, are all ditching, grubbing, uh, water diversion, uh, projects. Uh, the remainder on this list are all gravel projects and that is Villanue Road, um, Haken Road, uh, Monahan Point Road, not on the pavement. Any clarification? And then also, uh, Bradbury Road and Pearl, um, and it's, that keeps us, that puts us, uh, to the black right now, currently at a hundred and twenty-seven dollars. There will be one more remaining project that is going to be forthcoming for a road project, um, but, uh, manager Braggie has not finalized what that cost share is, although there is a, a private investor willing to be, uh, one-third cost share in paving a mile, so we're trying to, he's trying to actually get, um, Maple Ridge Township, which we have bought, um, that what is it, Turning Bowl or what Sitting Bowl, is that the, I think that's the, 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 the dividing municipal line off of Lake Winnia Road into the Geronimo addition. Um, I think they're waiting to see if Maple Ridge will fund, because this individual will actually pay for his one-third cost share paving all the way to Lake Winnia Club.
Wow.
Um, so I say strike while the iron's hot. But what is presented, uh, keeps us under our fifty-fifty match at a hundred and twenty-seven dollars net positive, and so.
You said it wasn't complete though, wasn't?
The, the remaining one that hasn't been brought.
Oh.
Is the Lake Winnia, this is complete, this, this satisfies our fifty-fifty match, we're already in agreement through desk control at thirty-five thousand, which can't be used at fifty-fifty match, but.
Just had a question, um, we, we talked about in the past, it's my understanding that we're kind of behind on taking care of our roads. Um, true?
Well, state of Michigan.
Well, I'm talking about their township.
Yeah.
Um, so are we limited by what the road commission can match if we had more funds to throw at some of these roads, I mean, or would we pay a hundred percent in that, uh, because the road commission is limited? I, I just don't know what, how, I don't know who generates the, the matching.
The, the generation of the match comes from state derived funds, gas tax that goes through the road commission and then also PA fifty-one. Um, and so that's how, and then I think even the, the newest revenue stream for road, uh, is actually, uh, exercised through the cannabis tax. I think now one percent of cannabis sales go into roads in the state of Michigan. Um, so they're the driver, uh, and then it's.
Are we missing any money that's on the table?
No, and I'm, anything that's left over, I fight for scraps there, so if, if match isn't used in other municipalities, every single year I've made an official protest that we will actually engage that matching fund.
So you said that after this is done, we have a hundred and twenty-seven?
With this, no, that would be for the fifty-fifty match.
We'd have a hundred and twenty-seven of the match left over.
Correct.
Right, but if, um, but do we still have any other money for this other project?
Yes, we have adequate, we have adequate funding in highways, bridges and roges, uh, roads, almost equal to.
So we wouldn't have to do a budget adjustment?
No, nope. And that's why I thought to have that funded the way, knowing that this larger scale project on Lake Winnia Road has.
I'll make a motion to be approved for two thousand twenty-four, um, road commission estimates as presented.
We have a motion on the table, is there any support? It's been moved and supported, uh, further discussion?
Who supported that?
Uh, Russ. Further discussion? Yes, you can. Um, seeing none, uh, roll call please.
Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Croll.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Palovich, yes, supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Moving forward under new business is number four, overhead door proposal, um, this was the only vendor that got back to me, uh, in regards to garage doors, here, uh, the the middle two doors on the DPW bay self-facing. The furthest one to the east, uh, has nearly completely failed and is inoperable, um, and this is, these are two original doors. Um, and so my recommendation, uh, to move forward with the, um, proposal brought forward by overhead door, uh, to be funded out of five nine two five three seven nine three one zero two zero. Which is improvements to buildings. They need it.
So disclosure is that overhead door, the folks that own it and the company have been clients of mine, I'm not currently doing any work for them, but.
I appreciate your, your open and honest, we do have a motion, I believe, from Treasurer Ellery Summers, for, supported by trustee Lappin, further discussion? I don't see any conflict in that, but thank you very much. Uh, that being said, uh, roll call please.
Trustee Croll.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Palovich, yes, treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Next item of business is, uh, an estimate, uh, I had estimates from A one, uh, I work with, uh, Nathan Liddell and DPW to, uh, bring forward some estimates for some of our DPW sites, uh, one being, um, in this estimate that is my recommendation between the two that we got, uh, this is the M thirty-two water tower. Um, and so all the foliage, uh, that goes from the retaining wall in the Walmart parking lot that is historically this self-sheds and drops on the parking lot. Uh, that will be a clear-cut exercise, uh, and then I believe he had one other site on this, well, it was French Road. So French Road, the station and M thirty-two water tower, um, and this was actually, I believe, eighteen hundred dollars cheaper than the other competitors' quote for those two sites combined. Um, so it is my, uh, recommendation, uh, to approve the estimate from the Bay Tree Service for both business sites to utilize GL five nine two, uh, five three seven nine three two zero zero zero.
So moved.
Well, the motion on the table, is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported, any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Palovich, yes, treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Croll.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Moving forward to new business item six, uh, is a quote, um, for some cabinets and working service for the building department at Lynn's, uh, window. As we had two, um, from Alpena Supply and from McDonald, um, and it's my recommendation to move forward with the quote that was brought forth by McDonald Cabinetry and Decorating, uh, for the building department, uh, finalization of the security wall project to utilize one oh one two six five nine three zero zero one zero. Zero, I've entertained that motion.
I'll make that motion.
Motion on the table, supported by trustee Lappin, further discussion, yes, Lord.
So I'm just curious, why'd you pick them over the other quote?
Uh, because I'm trying to compare, I have to compare apples to apples, and after the other company came, I don't like to mention names, uh, there were no longer apple and apple comparisons.
Oh, okay.
So. So we, any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Palovich, yes, treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Croll.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, moving forward to new business seven, um, is, uh, an estimate, um, to pave, um, the parking lot here, but in the southeastern corner as a continuation of our parking lot on this face towards the baseball fields to the north side of the back of the building, to get that corner. Um, historically, it's always been, uh, where the recycling dens have been and the lowest spot on our property, and so that just remains perpetually wet. And so by hardening that surface and getting it off, um, I have, and this can go either way, um, Prime gave me this estimate, I asked the two principal, uh, paving companies in Alpena, uh, for estimates and quotes, uh, I received the quote from Prime. I did not even have the other company show up until last Thursday. Um, and when I asked if we were to, uh, the board were to approve the quote, when would they actually satisfy the job? And the response I had. And the response I had gotten back was hopefully by fall. Um, and with Prime, uh, that submitted within two weeks of me asking for a quote. When I asked what their date of completion would be, um, they said within a month. So.
And this is new asphalt.
It's new asphalt.
Um, question, you talked about the, I don't know if it's a low spot or a wet spot, but.
All the grading.
There's going to be some grading will be to bring it up to grade.
Yep. Yep. That's included in that clause. Um, and I would love to always, and I, I, I previously spoke with, uh, Treasurer Ellery Summers. And I think that the three of us should probably get together soon with policy and procedures. Um, because the reality now, uh, as it states in policy and procedures, sometimes you don't have three companies to even get quotes from. Um, but what we've been finding for the past two years is, um, I'm to the point where I'm almost sending cards. And sympathy of please give us an opportunity so you can give us a quote. Um, it's gotten to that point, if you even get somebody to call you back. Um, so we could either move forward with this estimate. Um, which would satisfy our project or roll the dice and wait for company B to finally submit.
Is this the same company that did all of you?
Yeah. So our turnaround, here's another thing, uh, our turnaround time utilizing prime has gone from on D P W cleanup sites, went from thirteen months. To less than a month. So the service that we're getting is undeniably better.
Quality.
Yes, and Doug Moyn through F and B has been a wonderful mentor for this young, uh, entrepreneur. Um, and so a couple of the errors that we had early on in his first year of paving, he actually went back on his own cost and fixed for our brand. So that showed what a, quite a good deal of good faith.
I make a motion.
A motion on the table and support to move forward with the estimate brought forward with prime results. Um, my recommendation, and this is part of the, the conversation, um, it would be my recommendation actually to use ARPA monies. Uh, for that section of project, uh, which we actually have, um, funds available, not, but not allocated. Uh, twenty thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty-two cents.
So it'd leave us about five thousand left.
Roughly, yeah. Which I think it's our intent to get the ARPA funds off of our book by this year. Yes.
Does this quote include new painting and striping?
For that section. He, he was actually working on, uh, a estimate for the seal coat of the existing. Um, but we'd actually be technically back on a positive docket by doing that improvement next year. That way we're on a three-year rotation. Of seal coating and like line painting.
Is there a green belt between the building and paving? So, so you said it was, you said you're going to go sort of around the back of the building.
Correct.
Is it going to be butted paved up?
Right up to the building.
Bottom of the building, okay.
It's a flash roof and we have no water dispersal off the east side of that.
Well, that's where I was going to go. Is that, is there, is there any possibility of water migrating under that asphalt and causing problems?
Yeah, I guess if that's, that's a fair assumption. I guess I leave that to the expert if they, they think that it would be best, but maybe some French drain tile.
Well, that's what I was, I was thinking, I wonder. Drain tile put in there. It would cost a little bit more.
There's additional expense, bring it back to the board.
Yeah, I, I think so.
Copy that. Uh, any other discussion? Seeing none, uh, roll call please.
Trustee Laffin.
Yes.
Clerk Klavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Croll.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes.
Are you suggesting we give authority to expand on the? I should have said this before we voted.
Well, it seems to me that, uh, if a conversation should take place with prime results. And they, if they're going to set the grade in such a way that it would just roll away from the building. Then it's probably unnecessary. But if, on the other hand, if, if there. If there's an opportunity for water to get there, which means ice can get there, which means it can heave. If it, if it makes sense to put in a tile and send it to a low spot, I mean, this would be the time.
Are there any overhead doors that is going to be?
No, and principally what we've seen in terms of our, uh, flat roof excellency, uh, where we have water dispersal is principally on the north side of the building. When any predominant winds actually catch, it always blows off either right above my office.
Isn't there a rough drain to a tile?
Oh, there are some, but. I mean, they're, they're, I was just up there this morning looking at, at an A C unit. Um, but noted, I guess.
They're the experts.
Right now, the rough grade is actually sloped away to the east and to the south, so it may suffice. But if his thought process is similar to yours, I'll bring that back to the board. Okay.
But they wouldn't delete the pride, delete him doing.
No. Nope. Okay, moving forward, uh, new business, we're done with that business, correct?
Yes, we're on to number eight.
And now, uh, number eight, uh, public safety shared expenses. Michelle, what do you want to?
Um, this kind of got started last year during the audit that we have not updated what we charge the fire department for. Shared expenses, the electric, the heat, administrative telephone. Um, so I ran this by Chelsea Meter, the auditor, if this was a sound way to do it. Cause I did not know how the previous numbers, they came up with them because it was before my time. So it's based on the square footage that the fire department uses. It's based on actual. Um, what we've paid last fiscal for the different utilities. And we're charging the fire department thirty percent because they have thirty percent of the square footage. Um, in the previous fiscal last year, we charged them thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars, which would, they've been charged since. Two thousand seventeen. This year it would bring it down by using actual expenses to twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and four. So it's actually charging them seven thousand or four thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents left than we have been.
Are we actually? I'm sorry, no. Are, are we actually charging it back to them? I thought we passed a motion at some point in the last.
We stopped charging them rent, but we still have been charging them this shared utility expenses.
Okay.
And a flat. It's part of the budget that's already in there for them.
Alright.
I basically was going to say the same, so it's part of their budget.
It's, yes. Already been budgeted.
This is something that, uh, the township should be doing annually.
Yes, and from now on, like every year, I mean, the square footage I don't, isn't going to change, but we will use the updated. Actual expenses to figure out how much.
Well, if you think it's accurate, would you like?
I'll make a motion to approve or, or, I guess, approve this, uh. This recalculation of the public safety shared expenses.
We have a motion on the table to approve the, uh, presentation of the shared expenses for public safety. Is there support?
I'll support it.
It's been moved and supported. Further discussion?
So which budget year does that?
These numbers are for the last year's fiscal year. Right. And then they'll be updated every year.
So we don't do it before we budget, we do it after we budget for the year?
Well, it's got to be based on actual, so it's got to happen before we can allocate it to them.
So that gets paid then in the next fiscal year?
No, it goes, it's a journal entry. It's one of the year-end journal entries we have to do every year.
So we've budgeted more than this number?
Yes.
So we have a motion and support, further discussion? Roll call please.
Clerk Klavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Croll.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Laffin.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, moving forward, uh, new business number nine is a R and R fire truck, uh, invoice. Um. And this is, uh, the recommendation of chief, um. That, uh, we. Pay the invoice from R and R truck repair in the amount of two thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars and forty-nine cents to be coming out of, uh, G L. Uh, actually, two oh five, two, two oh five, three, three, six, nine, three, eight, zero, 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 vehicle maintenance. Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the table. Is there support?
Support. It just.
Further discussion?
I just want to say that we've already received one thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventy-three cents from the insurance company for the accident.
Which basically covers the part.
So how much was the total?
Was two thousand.
Eleven dollars and forty-nine cents.
So why are we approving? I, I see this, it says balance due.
Because we have to pay the full amount.
Yeah.
The insurance company pays us and then we pay R and R.
So we got a trust claim for roughly half.
Okay, so the, but the insurance has already paid us, uh, eleven thirty-four, seventy-three.
Correct. We've already received that.
We're just now paying the bill.
Yes.
Alright, I understand.
Uh, barring any further discussion, roll call please.
Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Croll.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Laffin.
Yes.
Clerk Klavich, yes. Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, next item of business, uh, Laura, you brought this forward, Opina County Equalization Department Maintenance Group.
This is our annual agreement that we have with Opina County Equalization to maintain our role and from our tax bills.
They print, envelope and mail them or do they?
They come to us in an envelope.
We stamp them.
We, yeah, we see them and put the postage on and mail them.
One is my question because. I have concerns about this because this is fairly vague, but it's a continuation. Cause last year we went to additional files, correct? The digital format of our books.
Of our, that has nothing to do with this. Um, the, what that has to do with, um, when we post the payments, that has to do with the treasurer's office.
Okay.
These are, these are, when we get our tax bill, these are the piece of paper.
But the bills.
Are, are we getting to the point where we could actually do it in-house? Cause I guess that's my question.
This is, uh.
And what is the timeline that Ted would need to know?
You'd have to ask him that those questions.
Well, cause I'm asking because with what's presented, it would be my recommendation to table this to the subsequent meeting. Because I've had some conversations of potentially, we could actually have, is that one dollar and eighty-five cents per parcel? We have an opportunity to save nearly thirteen thousand dollars in a contract if we do it in-house. And so I guess.
In-house, meaning through Allenburg.
Alan, because he's already doing seventy-five percent of what the county does. So it's kind of duplicit. That why are we paying our principal contract with assessing and then getting in a contract with the county to do?
So we should ask Alan.
So that's why I would like to have maybe further conversation.
Yeah, and I would recommend talking directly to the Equalization Director about that.
Well, then I guess it would be my recommendation at this point in time to table this.
I'll make that most. Motion to table it until.
I'll support that.
Till the next meeting.
Thanks.
Regular meeting.
Yeah, and we can get, have more conversation with Ted and Alan and figure out a way for.
Uh, dear to voice.
Yeah, we'll do a voice. Well, all those in favor of, uh, postponing to the subsequent meeting signify by saying aye. Oppose the same. Uh, moving forward, uh, is business eleven, M T A annual dues and an invoice. An invoice that has more than doubled in the time that I've been in office.
I was going to ask.
And to be honest, uh, we don't, I don't think utilize M T A. Enough to justify, uh, nearly seventy-six hundred dollar invoice. All, all the trainings that we do and all of our commissions and boards, we would still have that opportunity, that's usually a twenty percent higher. Cost, but we can do a lot of training for nearly seventy-six hundred dollars. I mean. We could either table this because my, my inclination is to step away from this time.
They only occasionally read the magazine.
Isn't part of M T A though to educate us on certain, uh, senate bills. House bills that are coming down the pipe to kind of help guide us into making any decisions when it comes to that kind of stuff. I mean, I know.
Yeah.
That is the training.
Which, yeah, obviously they're lobbyists.
Yeah, they're lobbyists, but they're lobbyists, I don't know if they were just on vacation, but they have done nothing for townships in the past two years. Um, I look at the clerk, for example. Where, where was M T A when we now have nine days of both?
First, that might have something to do with the composition of the legislature.
But, so I mean, I, I bring this to the board. I, I'm not in favor of moving forward with this expenditure. But, but we can.
Do they have other programs like lesser membership fees or they just have a flat rate?
It is based upon population principally is the driver and C P I and economic growth.
Are we getting an insurance discount?
No, that's through Park.
Okay, that's.
The only thing that, uh, sometimes they'll, uh, uh, they'll write a grant, uh, if they're still doing it, they may still not be doing it. They, if you send people off for, uh, um, training, say for example, in planning. Uh, uh, our plan used to, and I assume they still do reimburse those, those costs. Um, to the township, but that's the same thing that I was looking at. I'm like, jeez, it seems to me that these fees keep going up and up and up. And, and. How often do any of us utilize it? I, I know I've talked to the M T A lawyer a couple of times, maybe since I've been here ten.
Oh, I've talked to him once since I've been.
Okay, trustee Polly.
I talk to him every once in a while, but just on the second page here, item number six is cotton. The standard dues formula results are capped to a year-on-year increase of ten percent. So I mean, every year they increase to ten percent.
It is the same as last year, did not go up from last year.
Yeah. But since twenty-six.
But I didn't.
So, uh, well, we do have another opportunity. I think I emailed everybody, uh, Ken, Supervisor Lowber, um. Through, uh, a draftish, an invite to sit down with, uh, the new president of M T A. And also the executive director Neil Sheridan. I emailed you guys all that opportunity to reach out to Mr. Lowber. And, uh, I think I even sent it to the email that you can get into just to be considered.
Missed it.
Um, so M T A is going to, on June fifth, I will be, uh, unavailable. Um, but they are meeting, I believe, at J J's.
Right.
Um, so we can table this as well. If you guys would like, if we're going to have representation to talk to M T A, but. We're not going to lessen that fee and. I, I use M T A once a year principally. I have one point of contact and that's through their legislative lobbyists. When they're talking about, uh, city village township revenue sharing, in which direction they're going. Um. And so I say to this, I mean, the other side of it is the training mechanisms. Yeah, who doesn't like to get a nice little magazine with updates? But we can get a lot more training and we can still utilize M T A. But there's other organizations, Michigan Municipal League, that we could actually entertain and look, they provide very parallel services. Um.
Is that for cities only? It's probably sure to Joseph's probably.
Principally, but we've actually hosted M M L, uh, and done some of their trainings here.
Would we still be members of the local M T A? No, so that would kick us out of that.
But, I mean, I know with my Michigan Municipal Treasures Association, the membership fee is way less than this.
My recommendation is. Postpone this until we have representation talking to Neil Sheridan and J J's.
Is anybody going to be able to make that?
I know I'm not. So.
Yes.
Yeah, see, you're boiling hot dogs. What time? Uh, tweets.
Nine o'clock.
I want to say it's nine A M.
The J J's, yeah. And they only take like twenty minutes tops.
So I guess.
And they're already pre-cooked anyhow.
Yeah. They're beyond pasteurized.
I might be able to do that.
So I guess I leave it to this board. I would say either postpone it until that conversation takes. Or take a vote on it. I'm, I'm, I, I can't, I can't openly.
If somebody gets convinced at a meeting that we should be part of the.
Laura, you probably use it more than any of us, M T A.
I mean, I, I use my Michigan Municipal Treasures Association more than I do this, for sure.
And I mean, I look at it, in seven years, I've always wanted to go to the annual conference. And the real, and, and the, uh, the reality of any one of us trying to attend the annual conference for that week.
It's thousand.
Is nearly four thousand dollars when you add in meals.
I can go to the bar association meeting on Mackinac Island for less than that.
There's a couple of bars on that island. Um, so I'll entertain either a motion to postpone or to.
I make a motion that we, uh, at this point in time. Uh, not, uh, not continue our membership in the Michigan Township Association. See if that fails or.
Not renew?
Not renew. Not renew, yeah.
We have a motion on the table to not renew. Is there support? I'll support it. Uh, we'll call it.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
No.
Trustee Laffin.
No.
Clerk Flavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers, no. Trustee Croll.
No.
Supervisor Skibby.
No, so, yeah. Yes, actually, yes, I, I meant to say.
I would like to make a motion that we table this until we get more further information, we get to that meet. We might learn something there, if nothing else, we can get a private meeting with, uh, Mr. Sheridan and tell him that we need to talk to him. If he can bother to talk to us.
I'll, I'll support that.
So we have a motion to.
Table the M T A dues.
Postpone M T A dues and the precursoring motion, previous motion. Uh, until. Clarification has been made on June fifth and we'll bring it back to our.
Okay, so, Trustee Polly made that motion.
Yes. Then you supported, Trustee Laffin on the support. Roll call please.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Laffin.
Yes.
Clerk Flavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Croll.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Motion's added, I ran out of papers.
Yeah, so then I anticipate that this, uh, will be back on our subsequent board packet at which point in time. I can understand where we're going, but we'll at least have that conversation. Um, last op, or the last item of new business, Russ, would you like to, uh? Just how you gave me this, do you need it back?
I think I've got a copy of it. Yeah, so, um. For fundraising, our, our organization applied to the state lottery commission for a license. Uh, and, uh, I got this back asking for local governing body resolution for charitable gaming licenses. So I'm asking if our township would do this, I'll probably present it also to the city clerk. Uh, but although the organization is located in the city, it serves this county and I think three or five other county, four other counties. Uh, around us, uh, and it's, it's known as Options Pregnancy Center, that's a D B A of, of Compassion Pregnancy Center. Of Northeast Michigan, which was the original name in nineteen eighty-one, when it was incorporated, it's been an organization. Uh, working with couples who have unplanned pregnancies in area, it is a charitable, it has a five oh one C three rating. Letter from the I R S. I'm just asking that this, um, so that I can get this back to the state. And try to get this license as quickly as possible that if we could.
Well, and that is my point of clarification, I'm not opposed to bringing forth a resolution. But given the fact that it actually falls in the municipality of the city, whether or not they, they operate as a countywide and a multi-jurisdictional area. Where is this fundraising event? Because that's what.
Fundraising event's actually gonna be at the Posen Potato Festival. To complicate it more, so that's got nothing to do, and it doesn't talk about.
Okay.
Its location or its.
Okay, I didn't know if that was.
Why do we have to do this if it's?
You don't have to do.
Oh.
What, what is it?
But I guess what's the purpose of doing?
Yeah.
For the organization to, to be able to do this fundraising effort.
But why does the township have to?
I don't know. I, I was surprised, it didn't say, when they filed the application, that it was required and then they sent this form back.
Our township.
Might be where the, the event itself is located, we get these every so often.
Right.
But you shouldn't say that to them, and that's what probably, yeah.
Cause that's where my brain is.
Yeah, whereas, whereas we just, perfunctory, we, we, we okay, cause. Fine, um.
Is it just that we recognize them as a five oh one C three, is that kind of what the purpose?
Well, and I put a call in today to them, but I haven't got an answer to that, because they didn't answer.
Great area that we don't.
Uh, well, and it's not gonna hurt either way, I mean.
If, if they say it's rejected because it's not in the city or something, then.
I'm still a little confused as to what it is that we're.
We're basically saying that it's okay with you that we obtain a gaming license through the lottery commission.
Do they have to do that with any, any jurisdiction that they operate within?
That's what we're trying to clear.
I hope not.
Where the event is, um, just because it's gambling and it's normally not just a lawful thing, we can just gamble anytime, anyplace, but we can. With permission for special events.
And it didn't make that clear, and so that's why I've got to call into the state lottery.
Okay.
Cause do you want it from the municipality it's in? Do you want it from the municipalities it serves, or do you want it where the event's gonna be?
And when, when I was intro'd unlimited, when we did our annual banquet, we actually had to go through this process and it was at the location of. That's what's still stuck in my head. So when is this, when is the?
My problem is the timing, I'm trying to get this license so that, because the fundraising event is, uh, what? Second weekend, right after Labor Day, the second weekend, Sunday of, uh, the Posen Potato Festival, we're doing a.
So we'd have adequate time if we need to bring it back.
Well. Yeah, you would, I wouldn't, I mean, I'm, I'm trying to get tickets printed and get them out to distribute, so, yeah, it. If you don't, yeah, if it's, if it's too hard to do here.
Well, I don't know if it's too hard to do, I just don't know if we'll have any relevance to where you're.
It may not, it may not. I'm just trying to cover my base. I thought, well, it would be faster to bring it tonight here than wait till June and I'm gonna have to go to the city maybe. And if that's what they tell me, and, uh, get them to pass about it as well.
Yeah, I guess all we're doing is, is being asked to give their, give our blessings as a municipality for them.
It's sort of the same thing you do when you ask, you're asked about a liquor license and.
Yeah.
You know, whatever.
Well, yeah.
There's not a negative side.
No, no, I was just wondering if there was any, any, any lines that maybe were blurring, but it doesn't sound like we're blurring any lines.
No, if, if, if it's wrong to ask you for it, I just won't use it.
Yeah.
Maybe the Village of Posen, too, is that, is it the Posen?
I, well, it's gonna be at that community center there in Posen. I may sick one of the K O C fellows up there to get this from the city or the village there, but they didn't say village, so they said township. Yeah, township or village.
It's a city township or township, city or village.
Yes.
Um, so I guess I, I looked at council, is there any negative if we just? Proactively pass a resolution saying, and then you have it in your whip, or if you don't need it.
Basically, if needed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I guess then I would, uh.
I'll make a motion, we approve the resolution for Compassionate Pregnancy Tonic Center as presented.
Is there an actual resolution though?
I have it and I gave it to Michelle.
It's right here, Nathan.
Yeah, so.
Can you read it?
Yes, oh, there's nowhere as.
I know.
At a regular scheduled meeting, uh, at the Church Township available, called by order supervisor on today's date. At this time, uh, the following resolution was offered, moved by and supported by that request. This organization of city of, of Alpine County of Alpine, asking that they be recognized as a nonprofit organization. Operating in the community for the purpose of obtaining charitable gaming licenses be considered for approval, disapproval. Uh, and that's it. So it's pretty simplistic. Um, I don't see anything that would put us in a tailspin. Um.
I don't think there's any explosion, but I, that's not, that's Tim's job, no matter.
No.
But, but I do believe that we're on the right track, that it's probably gonna be through the municipality where the event is actually held.
Yeah, if it's there, then.
So.
Can't go north.
Does it have a, does it have an end date?
No, I've already, that's in the application.
Okay, alright.
That's on September eighth.
I'll, I'll support the motion.
Yeah. Already, we already have one or no?
Uh, yeah, Laura made the motion.
Okay, and support by Trustee Laffin, uh, roll, roll call please.
Trustee Laffin.
Yes.
Clerk Flavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Croll.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Um, moving forward, uh, this is the second and last opportunity for public comment. If there's any public comment, uh, online, please use, uh, the bottom task bar under the far right, under the ellipsis of more. Uh, to raise your hand or to send a message so that we can identify you in your comment.
Well, I can check, so. Just to go with the prime results, if you're gonna have payback there, how much more would it be to extend the blacktop in front of them? First bay door that would park the tanker.
Did not get that price, I'm looking at segmenting to stay within a budget.
Okay.
So.
Is that on the west side, man?
It would be on the north side.
North side, sorry.
On the north side.
Yeah.
Yeah, but on the north side, it does get a decent amount of water off the roof and ice, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't know if you were looking at that.
Just trying to, to take palatable bites, but thank you for your comment.
So long, no longer west chis about here, it's north side, okay, I get.
Okay, uh, are there any other public comments? Saying none, uh, is there any further discussion for the good of the order? Yes, Trustee Paul.
I have a couple things, uh, one, I don't know if anybody's aware of, but there's this new little park on. Uh, Third and Bagley, where I think they call it Hope Park. Somebody that owned the property, I read the article in the paper, and he made a park out of it.
Molly.
Is this something that our township would give a recognition, a little plaque or something, thanking them for beautifying a little piece of property? That's good for the use, if anybody wants to use it, can this board do a little something?
I think we can't, cause it's private property, so in effect, we'd be being charitable, which.
No, I don't mean give this, I mean like a plaque or something.
That's the way you spend money on the plaque, that's.
Oh, okay.
Even though it's, yeah, phenomenal.
We could potentially write a letter. That's fine, so maybe you and I can get together and I can draft something.
How's the rest of the board feel about that?
I think it's good, and I think, uh, it'll be interesting, given the consideration, um, with the Third Street intersection and those efforts that are going on. Um, I think every little bit that helps pedestrian, uh, safety in that corridor is, is much appreciated.
It took an ugly corner, made it look, look pretty darn good.
The other thing is, I just finished a, uh, Michigan Infrastructure Council course, uh, infrastructures. And as Nathan put me onto it, it's all done online, it's about twenty-five hours. Well, I think their twenty-five hours is a tad bit short, it's quite a bit longer than that, but it, it's working on bringing all the different infrastructures in the state. All right, down from like the city of Detroit, down to our township, with blending things together, of getting things done better, more reasonable. And on a more timely fashion. I found it very interesting, meeting different people from around the state. It is strictly in the state, it's free, it's done, and it's sponsored by the state, uh, it's the Michigan Infrastructure Council. That's under the taxes, I believe, and, uh, they also, I can recommend a person or recommend persons. Uh, on the board, you have to be a elected person to be involved in this or part of the township or government entities that wants to get into it. Um, Nathan has gone through it, I believe, four people from the city have gone through it. Um, so it's, uh, I did get a, a nice plaque or.
Certificate.
Certificate, a certificate, and did want any other information on it, but I, I, I found it very, very informational. But it does consume a lot of time.
It was a great course, honestly. I, it was the first webinar-based class, um. That I pull valuable information out, um, so I do recommend it to any other people. Um, I know at times constraints being what they are, um, but the online format, it's, it's definitely palatable and easy to do.
A couple of things I wanted to commend you for, two certificates we saw in your report, um, for finishing that. Education, uh, I think the one's kind of a big deal. Um, I, I don't know about the other ones, I don't know anything about it, but, but you know.
Yeah, so there's only one other certification in assessing in the state of Michigan that is above where I'm at.
In a suffering?
Yeah. In zoning administration.
Yeah, that's kind of a valuable commodity to have that education, so. Don't charge us too much.
Yeah, try not to. Um, any other discussion for the good of the order?
You, it's a, told me to write down.
Well, I kind of touched upon it, it would be my recommendation. A little bit, um, I was just giving you the plant that seed back in my head. Um, so yeah, let's, uh, schedule a policy, um, because I think that we now have a handful of different topics that we can kind of bruise. And, and make some recommendations to the board. Um, with that being said, any other discussion for the good of the order?
The other thing I was gonna mention is, along with Andrea Dutcher and, uh, Susan Skibby and myself, we had decent training, M T A training. Over in Gaylord, uh, on zoning board of appeals, uh, and, uh, that was valuable for me, because I'm. Well, I knew there, because I was disappointed, what, within the year, I think after I got here, so. So, just in the last three years, I, I'd have been by the seat of my pants when we've had C B A.
If there's no other discussion, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
We have a motion on the table to adjourn, is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported, further discussion. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye, uh, aye, meeting adjourned, say forty-two, thank you very much.